What? We're just not quite there yet, so. Trying to give you as much a heads up as we can.
Good evening, folks. Sound check?
We can hear you.
Great. I'll disappear then. Thank you.
Hey. Hello, Hung Ben. Ty, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm just grubbing.
Not sure exactly. All right, one minute. We're gonna have several guests with us at the beginning of the meeting who we want them to stay and wave. We're gonna do, Rand's gonna take a screenshot when everyone's there so it can help post out. We have a video tonight from our Chinese school. I see Caroline there. Trying to think who else is coming in. Hello. CJ, welcome.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, we're gonna have you, we're gonna do a few things first and then we'll have you share your point with us again. Love that. Said we have, we have a great beginning of the meeting. All right, Amy's given us the countdown. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 21st Town of Chapel Hill Business Meeting. We also have a public hearing tonight. We have a lot on our agenda this evening. We had a lot of people participating in our agenda this evening. We always like that. We say hello out to everyone who's watching in this virtual environment. We love to have people participate. We know that's a little harder to do in the virtual world, but we hope that you will try to find ways to stay with us and you can always email and talk to us on the phone as well. So, that being said, we're gonna start off this evening acknowledging the verdict that was handed out yesterday. And I've asked Councilmember Alan Boincey to share some words with us. We'll just start with, with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. What a mix of feelings we all had and shared yesterday evening when we heard the verdicts from the case involving the murder of Mr. George Floyd. It seems as though folks took a collective breath of relief. We shed tears, some felt numb. Yesterday, the system worked. But we can't have Mr. Floyd's life back. And it took an extraordinary confluence of events for that conviction to happen. That kind of confluence of events does not happen for so many black and brown people across America. The young teenage woman who thought to record what the officer was doing. The officer having the brazenness and callousness to hold his knee to a black man's neck in broad daylight. People peacefully protesting for weeks and months in Minneapolis and beyond. Pleading for charges to be brought and justice to be done. A prosecutor willing to bring charges and putting together what must have been the case of their lives. While this was a victory, it was a tempered victory. I believe this was the first time in history a police officer in the state of Minnesota was convicted of murder. In our country, it is incredibly rare for officers to be prosecuted, much less successfully prosecuted, for unjust treatment that injures and kills. This instance in which the system held someone accountable for unjust treatment that resulted in the murder of a black person must be a beginning, not an end, and not a blip. As Dr. King wrote in a letter from Birmingham Jail, "Let justice roll down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream." We obviously don't live in Minnesota and it can be easy to say that that happened over there. That wouldn't happen over here. That's the kind of thinking that makes conditions ripe for the recurrence of what happens to Mr. Floyd. In fact, we've already seen the injuries and killing of black and brown people happen over and over again since Breonna Taylor and since George Floyd. Dante Wright and Brooklyn Center, Jacob Blake and Kenosha, and on and on and on. And we as a town, we have our own record to evaluate and reckon with when it comes to violence against black and brown people. Manley McCauley was a black man who was brutally lynched just miles from where Town Hall stands. James Louis Cage Jr., a young black man who was stabbed in 1971, whose death was woefully under investigated at that time and the suspects acquitted by an all-white jury. We have made some progress, but as the reimagining Community Safety Task Force demonstrates, we have a ways to go to make sure that black and brown people are feeling as safe and comfortable as others to walk, run, and just be themselves in our community. In our state, we need to ensure accountability for officers who disrespect the badge and undermine safety in our communities with indiscriminate and discriminatory stop seizures and violent acts. We won't see progress as a state and as a nation without that accountability. And the same goes for anyone who commits racial acts of terror. Not just officers, but those who terrorize, injure, and kill our Asian-American sisters and brothers and those who profile and unjustly target our Latinx brothers and sisters. To do this work, it starts locally. We have had an outpouring of public comment last year in the wake of Mr. Floyd's death. The reimagining Community Safety Task Force has been added since the fall and now really diving into the work. And change has to be made at the state and federal level. The work has to continue with everyone in attendance here and especially with those who are not in attendance in our communities and those with lived experiences. For yesterday's verdict to actually be a watershed moment, we need every hand, voice, foot, and mind on deck to get to where we want to be. The struggle continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, for sharing that with, with us and with the community. We know this was just one step and it needs to be a forward motion. We need to continue to make changes to eradicate racism in our own community and nationwide. And we stand together against any kind of hatred acts towards anybody. Thank you for sharing. Okay, so on tonight's agenda, we have several items. We're gonna have updates about our poet laureate program and the work of our Community Safety Task Force. We've got some updates to the land use management ordinance on some changes to the state code, the 160D, and update to our historic district guidelines. We have two development projects on this evening. We have Signature Health and 2200 Homestead Road, the Affordable Housing Project. In keeping with state law, we need to do a roll call of our members here. So when I call your name, please unmute yourself and say aye or present. We'll start with Mr. Parker.
You're.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Boincey.
Here.
Ms. Gu.
Here.
Mr. Nguyen.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Stegman.
Here.
The mayor is also here. And again, I remind you, we do appreciate public comment. There, if you didn't register beforehand and you're, you're online and you'd still like to speak, you can use the raise hand function when we get to those portions of the agenda where we have public comment. And if you're on a phone, I believe you can use the star nine and we will call you in. Mr. Parker will be helped call folks in. So I want to say up next, we're gonna have a special video. Sorry, okay, something was Harvey down there. And we have several guests with here who created this video. If you can show your pictures for us, I know a couple of you here are, there we go. These are students from the Chinese School in Chapel Hill. We have Bo Chi, Caroline Chen, Annie Wu, Teresa. Sorry, have your, sorry, got the name very. And Shi Long Zao is here also from the coordination. Can we have all of you wave so we can take a screenshot of everyone waving and saying hello? Ty, make sure you're on there. Rand's gonna get a shot. There we go. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Okay. Thank you. So, thank you for putting this video together and we will roll the video.
Why and how do some people think it is okay to harass or murder people just because of their heritage?
It's a heavy question for our America, a nation of immigrants who have come to build this country from the ground up. Millions and millions of Asian-Americans work to better this country. We are Americans too, so why are we being singled out or treated as less than American?
We deserve to be treated with dignity and with respect.
Hate crimes threaten America and its people.
So angry and disgusted by how people think it's right to discriminate against people who are of color.
The problem is that marginalized communities live in the knowing that they must not fear only death, but also despair.
How much more do we need to sacrifice for everyone to understand that we are your neighbors, your friends, your colleagues, your teammates, and your fellow Americans?
And work together to recognize our true common issues.
Unity is what keeps us strong. Nowhere does hate.
Be a community as one, to support each other, to fight for one another, and to keep one another safe.
Let's remember every shed tear and we will reconcile love to fear.
We must protect each other as we cannot do this alone.
You are worthy of protection, safety, and dignity because all human beings deserve both.
This country is our country.
We are all America.
To support our community during this.
This country is our home.
It's not me versus you. It's an us versus racism.
To stop hate, it takes a nation. Black, white, Latino, Asian.
Stand up and speak up.
There's a question.
Why is so important?
Together, we can move forward.
This means every community, every group of people, everyone needs to come together in the face of the common enemy of racism and its true root causes.
When all else seems to fail, love is what will prevail.
Thank you. That was wonderful, wonderful. I know, and Hung Ben Gu brought this to us and we were delighted to share it with everyone. I know there's a couple of people who want to say a few remarks. Ms. Gu and Mr. Zhao, did you want to speak? Welcome.
Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, good evening. My name is Shi Lung Zhao, resident of Chapel Hill and the current president of Chinese American Friendship Association of North Carolina. I would like to take this opportunity to thank town council members and the staffs who participated in the solidarity rally and vigilance for the victims in Atlanta shooting last month. This event was organized by Chinese American Friendship Association and co-organized by NCAAT on March 21st on Front Street. Led by city council member Ms. Hung Ben Gu. Thank you all for stepping up on the stage and expressing your support and the condemnation to the Asian hate crimes and the racism against the AAPI. I'm very pleased to see our young generation citizens stand up with their parents and teachers and express their opinions against the racism and Asian hate crimes. I know we have a long way to go. Come together, we can stop the racism. I would also like to thank Chief Lu, Director of Chapel Hill Police Department, for participating in the Asian Community Safety Dialogue hosted by CAFRA and UCA together with NC FBI Special Agent in Charge, Mr. Wells, and other local law enforcement officers in Triangle area. The conversation went very well with many positive feedbacks in Chinese-American community. Again, I would also like to thank Chapel Hill Police Department to host a virtual AAPI Community Safety Conversation on April 13th. The practical safety knowledge and the community safety analysis shared by Chief Blue are very helpful and I really learned a lot from the conversations. I wish this kind of conversations will be continued periodically. It will profoundly promote the relationship with AAPI communities and improve the community's safety with efforts from both the law enforcement agencies and the communities. Thank you, Mr. Chief Blue and your team. Many thanks go to everyone who devoted your time and efforts to make our living environment safe and peaceful. Thank you and a good night.
Thank you, and thank you for being willing to stand up and have brave conversations. We appreciate you and respect you and part of our community.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Gu, did you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, well, I think from what happened in Atlantic killing in March 21st to what we, to what we hear yesterday about this guilty verdict against a police officer who murdered George Floyd. I think after, in the past year, we have seen all the tragedies that we are incensed by the meaningless loss of the lives. And a lot, and a lot of times that we feel like we are hopeless. Well, facing every day in the news of the news of mass murders and the injustice that we have been experiencing every day. But I'm hoping that we're not going to be paralyzed by the pain, by our fear and anger. And what we have seen today in our youth, in their video, their message of love versus hate, I think it really gives me hope. And I think that is the message that our community need to hear and our country need to hear. And hopefully that we can see there is a better days ahead and we can work together, not, not only by our words and the speech, but through our actions and choose in, through choose and action, we're going to bring in a society that's more just, more equal, and more fair for everyone.
Thank you. Well, thank you for sharing your video and thank you for coming tonight. We hope you will stay engaged and, and we want those conversations to continue and the actions to take us forward. Thank you all. All right, next up, we do have two proclamations this evening. One is our breastfeeding family-friendly community proclamation. We're not gonna read the whole proclamation, but it's important because we joined into the larger movement along with partners at UNC Women's Hospital, the Women's Birth and Wellness Center, and Orange County to support women and families' decisions to breastfeed by providing town-wide education and appropriate spaces and town facilities. Helping families stay healthy is a high priority for the town. And according to the American Academy of Pediatricians and other leading health organizations, breastfeeding is the optimal food for infants. We appreciate the work of local healthcare professionals, educators, childcare workers, and others in our community who help support mothers and families and will post the proclamation along with the other information on our social media. And next, we have a proclamation is Volunteer Appreciation Week. We have so many volunteers in our community, especially during this COVID time. People across the country are being thanked this week to send a heartfelt thank you out to all of you who have volunteered your time, your effort, your resources. You truly make a difference in our community. Every year, we're so grateful for all the different services. I wanted to give a shout out to, to the folks who've been cleaning up our greenways and cutting back the privated planting the milkweed to attract more monarchs. We've got a lot of combination programs going on. We also have people helping us distribute food. And we've had volunteers be there every week, over and over and over again, along with our own staff who've been volunteering their time. We've also had businesses volunteering during this time to help people get through the pandemic. And our advisory board members, they're all volunteers. They volunteer their time to give input and help shape the community. So whether you've been helping clean up greenways, distributing food, helping others in many different ways, we want to say thank you. We couldn't do this as a community without the help of our volunteers and the partnership of our volunteers, so. Quick reminder that it is Earth Month and tomorrow is Earth Day. I've been attending the North Carolina Energy Summit this week and learning about all the different types of energy solutions and things proposed coming in our future and things that are working now and the goals and the discussions going on. I'm not sure what certification I'm getting by attending all these. You do get a certification at the end of it. We'll see what I end up being. I'm not an engineer, so I would think that's funny. All right. Now we're going to move on to a resolution. This is a time-sensitive resolution that we were asked to do between the North Carolina League of Municipalities and our own metro mayors. And I'll just give you some background and Mr. Parker's gonna sort of paraphrase the resolution that was sent out to you today. It's about Senate Bill 349. It was introduced into the General Assembly with the stated goal of creating affordable housing opportunities across the state. We'll talk about that in just a minute, but if this was approved, it would drastically reduce the zoning authority of local governments and several severely restrict conditional zoning, which our town rely on, relies on to advance important town goals, including the creation and preservation of affordable housing. Chapel Hill has long used town planning and zoning as an important tool to foster an inclusive community, support the environment's sustainability, create a connected transportation network, and to build a robust economy. Based on the evaluations of this bill by our own town attorney, planning staff, and experts across the state, it is our understanding that this bill would not further the stated goals and is likely to result in unintended consequences to our residents. For that reason, I brought this resolution to you. We're joining with other cities across North Carolina and counties are also looking at this to put a resolution of support against this bill. In our resolution that you saw, we do affirm our commitment to affordable housing. There is nothing actually in this bill that specifically spells out creating affordable housing. So, Mr. Parker, can you read us the now therefor's and the be it further resolved, please? You're muted. Easier to read it that way, but let's.
I do some of my best work. This is a resolution opposing passage of Senate Bill 349 and it supports the work of metro mayors and North Carolina League of Municipalities and a general assembly to study and advance thoughtful and affordable housing and land use policy options in his resolution R 0.1. And it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Chapel Hill Town Council, do hereby oppose passage of Senate Bill 349 and request that the mayor convey this resolution to our elected representatives in the North Carolina General Assembly. And be it further resolved that the Chapel Hill Town Council recognizes the need for solutions and reforms that will result in more opportunities for affordable housing, support diversity in our communities, and address longstanding racial injustice. Therefore, we support the work of metro mayors, the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and North Carolina General Assembly to study and advance thoughtful and sustainable affordable housing and land use policy options to achieve these goals."
So moved. Parker, you were seconded that since you read it.
Yeah, sure, second.
The move by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Parker. Any discussion on this resolution? And I'm sorry you had to come so quickly. I will thank Jeannie Brown for pulling together information and trying to get feedback incorporated into this resolution for us. All right, roll call vote then. Mr. Parker.
Hi.
Ms. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Boincey.
Hi.
Ms. Gu.
Hi.
Mr. Nguyen.
Hi.
Ms. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Stegman.
Hi.
And the mayor says aye as well. Thank you and thank you for working to get this done expeditiously. We appreciate it. The Senate actually filed over 700 bills. There's been a lot of activity going on in Raleigh. The House still has a few days left to put in the rest of their bills and then crossover happens. We're trying to stay on top of as many of these bills as we can. It's an interesting situation with some of these bills. There is one that we hope will die in the bind that takes away our authority to have a tree ordinance. So there's just all kinds of interesting bills out there and it is daunting to try to keep track of them all. I'm not sure how they're doing it, so anyway, appreciate that. Okay, now it's time for, sorry, I didn't ask if anyone else had announcements. Does any other council ever have announcements? Okay, then it's time for public comment on items not on the printed agenda. We do have a couple of petitions. I'll start off with that. And if someone in the audience is wishing to speak about something that's not on the printed agenda, you can use the raise hand function. Our first up is the Environmental Stewardship Advisory Request regarding UNC Chapel Hill's request to renew its coal burning permit for the Cameron Avenue Co-Generation Power Plant. I didn't know that anyone was here to speak on that item. It's Harvey, did anyone sign up?
No.
Not that I expect for this one or the next one.
I did reach out to Professor Peeler to talk. He's the director of all things environmental and UNC released its Climate Action Plan on Friday. We had a good discussion about the coal burning plant and the plans for that. We'll be working on a letter to go to the Utilities Commission as they look at this permit. I will circulate that letter to you all as soon as we can get it put together. It's, the comments can run through May 4th, so it gives a few more days to get that put together, but we'll circulate that out to everyone, but we would need a motion to receive and refer.
I move to receive and refer.
The move by Mr. Parker, second by Ms. Anderson to receive and refer. Roll call vote, Mr. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Boincey. Ms. Gu.
Hi.
Mr. Nguyen.
Hi.
Ms. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Stegman.
Hi.
And the mayor also says aye. Thank you. We have another petition because there was no other path that we could discern for this to go through from Brown and Bunch Law Firm to request permission to proceed with a presentation of a proposal of a columbarium at the old Chapel Hill Cemetery. The petition is, is out there. Like I said, there was no other path, so we're, we're receiving and referring it to the mayor and manager, the manager and staff can go through this and then bring it through the advisory commission to evaluate the situation.
I'll move, receive and refer.
Second.
The move by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Parker. Any comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote then, Mr. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Boincey.
Aye.
Ms. Gu.
Hi.
Mr. Nguyen.
Hi.
Ms. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Stegman.
Hi.
And the mayor also says aye. Thank you very much. I know we have another petition, but it's for a particular item, so we will not have that at this moment. And were there any other members of the public wishing to speak on something not on the printed agenda?
No.
Okay. We will move to the consent agenda. I just want to make an announcement. I know some folks were looking for the ARA project. This, an item on the consent agenda moves the ARA project to May 12th. May 12th will now be a hybrid meeting where we'll have a budget work session in the beginning and the ARA project public hearing on the second part. That gives us time to have an updated traffic model or information meeting on May 3rd. So I just wanted to clarify that that would not be on the agenda tonight. And it's in the consent agenda to move that item to May 12th, so I'll save. So move by Ms. Anderson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nguyen. Okay, good, for the consent agenda. All right, any other comments about consent agenda? All right, roll call vote then. Mr. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Boincey.
Aye.
Ms. Gu.
Hi.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Stegman.
Hi.
Mayor says aye as well. All right, thank you. That's you names on consent agenda. All right. You have an information item in your packet as well. That brings us to item number 10, which is the Town of Chapel Hill Poet Laureate Program Update. Also have our poet laureate here with us to share his words. And I think Ms. Brown is going to introduce you, so hang on this minute. There she is. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Susan Brown. I serve as your library director and executive director of Community Arts and Culture. And I thought it only appropriate to start this item off, which is about our poet laureate program with a reading from our inaugural and esteemed and beloved poet laureate CJ Sut. And for those on the call who may not be familiar with CJ, I will offer a very brief introduction. CJ is a performance poet, arts educator, and community organizer from Chapel Hill, whose work is rooted in storytelling and social justice, both of which I believe you will hear in his poem tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to CJ Sut, poet laureate of Chapel Hill.
Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for that introduction. Such an honor to be here with you all and serve as your poet laureate at that. Just want to show so much love to the video that got shown in the beginning. It just reminds me so much that It just reminds me so much that our struggles are inextricably linked. And I think that there's a beautiful thing about being here in this space because the poem I'm about to share with you was an exercise in dreaming. And I think that you all are dreamers. The world needs dreamers. I was in a reality that didn't allow me to dream very much all last year. And this poem came out of that. One of my favorite quotes says, "May I awaken within the dream." So that all dreamlike beings might also awaken from the nightmare of illusory suffering and pain. And so with that, I'll share this poem with you. "In the aftermath, I'm sure I'll feel like a tourist passing through my own life. I'll add up my subtractions, stand in the great divide, multiplying the things I have left. In the aftermath of all this, I'll sing with you in a choir stand, on street corners, and at my favorite karaoke night, I'll stroll aimlessly around the mall, even though I hated them all. We'll brush shoulders and walk down the same aisles. I'll make you a meal. I'll never leave the party early without a really good excuse and will dance. Bump and grind, spin and dip. I'll give you a spoonful of my ice cream. I'll let you try my beer, a forkful of my favorite dessert. We'll pass homemade dishes around a full potluck dinner table. We'll have hugs so close and tight. The world will burst into giggles. I'll hold my friends' children, kiss the foreheads of my nieces and nephews. I'll bump your hand as we walk down the street. You won't have to look for the smile in my eyes above my mask. We'll get a window seat. As we watch friends and lovers gather on lawns and in courtyards, I remember the things that brought me strength, the ways I gave and was given to, how I learned to pause and breathe in the day, how I made a feast of my feelings and served it up poem after poem, seeing myself both seed and tree. The world will see me in full color. Black and American, a resilient ancestry will hold our leaders and officers accountable. We won't be so well adjusted to injustice and we will allow suffering to speak. We'll get to work and heal together. In the aftermath, I'll reach into my pocket for a letter from my past self that reads, "I will be here for you, yes, always and forever, even when the world stops and the cards have all folded and you are in between the lines." Thank you all so much.
Thank you. That was wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you CJ. Thank you so much. That poem has, every time I hear it, every time I read it, it brings up different feelings. So, thank you. So I am here tonight to give you all an update on the Chapel Hill Poet Laureate Program and recommend two actions. The first is to, the first is to extend the current poet laureate's term by one year. And the second is to adopt the program framework developed by staff, a copy of which is in your packet. And this presentation, which is about four slides, will give you context for both of those. And I do want to start by recognizing other staff who have helped with this item and with this program. Megan Rosen, who is the Assistant Director for the Library and Community Arts and Culture, has helped bring this item and this framework forward. And Melissa Bartolletta, who is our marketing and communications coordinator for Community Arts and Culture, has worked very closely with CJ and myself and others to really develop this program. So I'm going to share my screen and of course, in addition to those staff members, I do want to of course thank CJ Suit, who has been amazing to work with and has been instrumental in developing what I'm bringing you tonight. So can you all see my screen?
Not yet.
Sorry. Try this again.
There we go.
Okay, great. All right, so we. All right, bear with me, full screen. So I just wanted to start. Melissa pulled together really a collage of media clippings and collateral from the last year or so with CJ. And this just shows you some of the recognition that he has received, both from being our poet laureate and for the aftermath and for some of his other work. And this is really just a small sampling of the many recognitions that he has received. So where we started, as you all know, in November of twenty nineteen, council appointed our first poet laureate with CJ. The laureate was appointed for a two-year term, beginning in January twenty twenty and ending in December twenty twenty-one. And the poet laureate was awarded a stipend of two thousand dollars for a two-year term. And Community Arts and Culture was identified as the town department to liaise with the laureate and coordinate the program. Since then, we've learned a lot from working closely with CJ and from talking with other poet laureate programs. We've learned that a two-year program works, works well and is a pretty common length of service. We've also learned that an increased stipend would make the program more appealing, more prestigious and more in line with other similar poet laureate programs. So many thanks to CJ for bearing with us through many, many meetings, but regular meetings, the town staff and the laureate are key. And we've also learned that we really need to balance the official appearance, appearances. So there's public poet laureate appearances. If you think of CJ reading at the Chapel Hill Nine Marker dedication or CJ reading at the town's MLK Day celebration, those. And then the other things that we might commission them separately for. So we've learned to really navigate that with transparent conversations and being curious and just keeping lines of communication open. And we've certainly learned that COVID limited the inaugural poets' ability to fulfill their charge and duties. So that is why we are coming to you tonight, asking to extend CJ's term by one year through December of twenty twenty-two. So what we're proposing in addition to extending CJ's term is, in your packet, you'll see in that one-page document a more formal application and selection process, keeping that two-year appointment framework, but increasing the stipend to three thousand dollars, total fifteen hundred dollars per year. You'll see in that document that we would, that the staff in Community Arts and Culture would jointly design the duties. And it would really be tailored to if they're a spoken word poet or maybe a poet with different, you know, interests or a different style or if they had interest in working with seniors or working with youth, that we would really work with them to define their duties. And as I say in that fourth bullet, really monitor their official appearances and anything beyond that that we might do were to compensate them for that. So what we'll do next, assuming that you all approve this tonight, is we will continue to raise the profile and impact of the poet laureate program. We would start that formal application and selection process in twenty twenty-two with a new poet laureate appointed by council in November, you know, October, November of twenty twenty-one and the laureate taking office in January of twenty twenty-two. We've really had some wonderful conversations with the staff and the poet, the poets laureate in Carboro and Hillsborough and other poets laureate in the state. So we're really talking about some interesting collaborative programming efforts. And then this is something that CJ has brought forward and we've also talked with folks in Hillsborough about. They just implemented a youth poet laureate program. And we would really like to see this happen here. It's a really good fit here. And the youth poet laureate program is actually part of a national network and a national program. That's really wonderful. So that's something with CJ and the next poet laureate that we would look to pursue. So the recommendation that we're bringing to council tonight is that you adopt R six, which includes the proposed guidelines for the poet laureate program and the extension of the current poet laureate's term to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Can you give us the full screen back again?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Stegman.
Thanks, Susan. That was great. Just a quick question. The two thousand dollar stipend does seem quite low. What is, what is the usual amount or the range of amounts? Three thousand still seems kind of low to me, so I'm just, we're interested in what the range is usually.
Sure, I could speak to, we met with, so I, it really, the ranges varied by size of municipality and, you know, many factors. I can say that Carboro and Hillsborough, we all talked and we were proposing to raise ours to three thousand. And I believe both of them are taking steps to make theirs the same. So I can't give you specific information on other ranges, but I will say that I believe that very soon Carboro, Chapel Hill and Hillsborough and Hillsborough will all be at the same level.
Okay, so the market rate is kind of three thousand. Okay.
That's the local current market rate, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other clarifying questions? Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back for comments from council. Ms. Anderson. And Ms. Goo.
Well, I just wanted to say a very quick thank you to our staff, to Mr. Suit. Not only is your poetry beautiful and powerful, but being the first is, I guess, a little bumpy and you get to help guide the future of the program, which is, I'm sure, not always exciting, but we're very excited that you were part of it. So thank you for doing that. And thank you to council member Boinsy and council member Shavitz for, for bringing this forward. And I just, I just think it's really such a cool idea and wonderful. And I don't know if Alan is busy with kids, but I think he should move R six.
Yeah, Ms. Goo first, she had her name.
I think that this is such a time that we need poetry, we need arts to really bring people together, to, to bring this healing to the community. I think we are going through too much in the past year, so I'm in strong support of this program. And especially this proposal of bringing this new laureate program. I think a lot of youths are enthusiastic about that and that they are engaged in this reflections of what is going through. And there are confusions, there's a fear, but there's also hope. So I'm, I'm in strong help, but I'm in strong support of this program. I think it will bring great, it's a, it's an asset of our town. I'm looking forward to bring people together and do a lot more in the coming year.
Mr. Boinsy, we're going to ask you to move it. So I'll finish up with comment and then ask you to make your comment and move this item. But I just want to say thank you to CJ Suit for the way you express yourself, the way you embrace community, the way you help both heal us and inspire us to be better. And that's, we couldn't have asked for anything more in our poet laureate. And you just, you set the bar really high. So thank you for that and thank you for working with us to make a program that we hope will attract more talent to come in and be part of this expression of art. Mr. Boinsy.
Thank you and want to thank council member Anderson for her shout out of council, council member Rachel Shavitz and I. Really grateful for CJ. Because, I mean, I really couldn't think of a finer first poet laureate for the town of Chapel Hill. And, and your poem CJ, "In the Aftermath", you know, when I, when I hear a song or I think of a, of a time in my life, you know, I tend to think about it, you know, in terms of, you know, songs that were going on at that time. And when I think back to this pandemic, your poem is really at the top of the list for me. So thank you so much for your work, brother. And I move R six.
Second.
The move by Mr. Boinsy and second by Mr. Parker. Any comments that haven't been shared? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Hey.
Mr. Boinsy.
Aye.
Ms. Goo.
Hi.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Stegman.
Hi.
Mayor says aye, yay yay yay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Motion's unanimous. Thank you so much. Thank you for continuing on and you're being willing to continue. Thank you for, to help us out. We appreciate that. All right, go forth and create. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number eleven. Hang on, is she here? Consider an application for special use permit, limited scope modification for Signature Health of Chapel Hill at sixteen oh two East Franklin Street. We have seen this item before, but their permit expired, so it's coming back to us for a limited scope. And we don't need to see the entire presentation again, so take us away. And yeah.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Anne Yergron with the Planning Department. And like the mayor just said, we're here for a special use permit or SUP modification to Signature Health at sixteen oh two East Franklin Street. I have six slides and this should not take more than five minutes for me to present this. Here's where we are in the process. This project has been through multiple rounds of review. We had a public hearing on it back in March and now it is before you, the town council, for possible action. The recommendation before you tonight is to adopt Resolution A approving the special use permit modification. A little bit of background, back in January, the council approved a limited scope special use permit modification. And this was to adjust the construction start and end dates. Back in twenty seventeen, when this SUP was approved, the start and end dates for construction were October of twenty nineteen through October of twenty twenty-one. The app, the project was delayed a bit, and so they are coming forward now for approval so that they can start construction. And the proposed dates in the ordinance are April twenty-first of twenty twenty-three to start construction by. We anticipate them starting a lot sooner and that they would complete the construction by April twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. We did want to be completely transparent in this process and as we described the last time we made a presentation on this item, the applicant has come into compliance with a few of the stipulations that were part of that original special use permit modification. They've removed two storage trailers and replaced them with some storage sheds. They also changed around the parking just a hair and this increased the impervious surface area by a hundred and ninety-seven square feet. So it is a very small increase, but we did want to show it just to be completely transparent. Again, the proposal in front of you tonight is to adopt Resolution A approving the special use permit modification. And right now we have the opportunity for any clarifying questions and I know the applicant is also here and able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Is anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
There are none.
Okay.
That we adopt Resolution A approving the special use permit modification.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Win. Are there any comments that haven't been shared before? All right, then we will do a roll call vote on the motion. Mr. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Boinsy.
Aye.
Good, thank you. Ms. Goo. Mr. Win.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Stegman.
Hi.
Mayor says aye as well. Thank you for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you.
We wish them well because that's, we don't have to see it again, right? We're done. Yay, okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to item number twelve. Oh, Ms. Willinger, do you have something? No, okay, didn't know. All right, item number twelve, consider land use management ordinance text amendments, proposed changes to section three point six point two Historic District Related to Review Criteria and Section eight point four Historic District Commission. We have you back, Anya.
Yep, I'm back. I'm going to have issues, of course.
That's fine if you just want to leave it like that.
All right, sounds good. So again, Anne Yergron, Planning Department, I apologize for whatever's going on this time with the PowerPoint. But we're here before you tonight with a recommendation to adopt the Resolution of Consistency and enact Ordinance A, which would adopt the Land Use Management Ordinance Text Amendments related to the Historic District Review Criteria as well as the Historic District Commission. This project has also been through.
This project has also been through several rounds of review and is now before the Town Council for possible action. Since the last time we met at our public hearing, we have updated the reference so that it reads 160D Article 9 Part 4, so it's the correct reference to 160D. And we also added, based on council input, that the HDC should not consider paint as part of their review. So here is what is in your staff report. You have a Resolution of Consistency and ordinance approving the amendments, a resolution denying the amendments, and then recommendations from the Historic District Commission and Planning Commission. Here's just a quick summary of the HDC text amendments that were presented to you back in March. We are proposing to remove the A through J criteria and rely solely on the design principles and standards. We're also proposing to amend the language so that it more closely follows the state historic preservation offices' model preservation ordinance. And then we've gone through and replaced any reference to the design guidelines with design principles and standards. So here is that reference in 160D that now requires that historic districts adopt principles and standards rather than design guidelines. Here is the, this is a quick summary of the text amendments that are being proposed, and we've provided a more thorough outline in your staff report. But as you can see, we're replacing any reference to the guidelines with design principles and standards. And we're also clarifying that minor works can be now found in the design principles and standards rather than in the rules and procedure. It's similar here, we just updated the language to better follow the state model ordinance. And we're also adding that the HDC should not consider plantings and other vegetation, as well as paint color. Here again, replacing guidelines with principles and standards and correcting the reference to 160D. And so with that, the recommendation before you is to adopt the Resolution of Consistency and enact Ordinance A. And I can answer any questions that you might have about this.
Thank you, brings us back to full screen. There we go. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, there aren't.
Okay.
I move we adopt the Resolution of Consistency R9.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Nguyen. I know Ms. Ryan is our liaison to the HDC Historic District Commission. And you can verify, they've seen all these in our agreement with.
They've seen all that, they have worked on the initial draft, which to conform to the state historic preservation ordinance. They're, they're pleased with what, what they've done. And they, the new design guidelines are amazing. You should, you should go check them out sometime.
We know this has been a lot of work. Our Historic District, our staff, the commission, our staff, and members of the community have helped with moving all of this forward, so thank you for this. I think this is the final piece, right, for, it's great, all right. It's been moved by Ms. Anderson and second by Mr. Nguyen. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Boincey?
Aye.
Ms. Gu?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Stegman?
Aye.
And the mayor also says aye, so unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have to enact Ordinance A or just the Resolution of Consistency?
Oh, both, please.
Hey, I'll move that we enact Ordinance A.
Second?
I need a second, thank you. Moved by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Nguyen, any other comments? All right, roll call vote then, Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Boincey?
Aye.
Ms. Gu?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Stegman?
Aye.
Mayor also says aye, thank you very much, okay. So I didn't have to go back again, there we go. All right. Appreciate that. That brings us to item number 13. Updates and preliminary recommendations from our Reimagining Community Safety Task Force. We've had a little bit of shift on this item, and I've asked our town manager, Mr. Jones, to share with us an update.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the Reimagining Community Safety Task Force has asked for this item to simply be an information item for council this evening. They wanted a little more time to work on finalizing their recommendations. And we anticipate the task force will come back to the council in May or June with those recommendations for your consideration. In the meantime, one of the reasons I think they felt that they needed to try to bring something to you earlier was because of concerns that we would not have some recommendations to help guide us with the budget process. What we are doing from a budget perspective is putting, we will be putting some money aside in the budget to try to anticipate providing some funding to help support recommendations, at least in the near term. So we will, in a couple of weeks, be presenting a budget to you that will have some funding in there to, to help assist with that, without having the specifics in place. But they do anticipate coming back in May or June with more specific recommendations for your consideration and for the community's consideration as we move forward.
Thank you.
True.
So our council members, Mr. Nguyen and Ms. Stegman and Mr. Boincey are all part of this task force. And I know you met on Monday evening, is that right? And that you're meeting again, I think you're meeting again next week as well, or soon, two weeks, sorry. And anyway, if there are any clarifying questions from council members at this point, because you don't have a full list of recommendations, so. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Jones? All right, anybody from the public signed up to speak on this item? So please thank the task force for giving us their input and for doing all this work and deliberating, and we look forward to hearing from them. Great, thank you. All right, so that'll bring us to item number 14. Open a public hearing for Land Use Management Ordinance Text Amendments, Proposed Changes to Articles 1, 3, 4, 5, 8, and Appendix A to bring the LUMO into compliance with North Carolina General Statute 160D, and Initial Review of Amendments to Town Code, Proposed Changes to Chapters 5, 7, and 9 to update references in the chapters to align with the North Carolina General Statute 160D. That was a very long title name for this agenda item. So we welcome Ms. Duffy Rogers to help share with us what we need to do, to explain it to us, and then to tell us what we need to do with this. We can't hear you if you're talking to us already.
I'm still trying to deal with technology. Presentation? Wonderful, thank you very much. Good evening, I am Alisa Duffy Rogers, the project manager. This evening, I will quickly give a review of the process for the 160D amendments, give a brief explanation of 160D, provide an overview of the major 160D related changes, and provide a staff recommendation. The process for consideration for the 160D amendments included consideration by the Planning Commission on April 6th, opening and closing the public hearing this evening, and council action on May 19th. For the LUMO text amendments, staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing, receive public comment, close the public hearing, and allow written public comment for 24 hours. Comments may be submitted to the email address shown on the screen. For the Town Code text amendments, staff's recommendation is that the council review the proposed amendments, receive public comment, and enact the Town Code amendments with the LUMO text amendments on May 19th. In 2019, the General Assembly took up legislation that they intended to consolidate and modernize the enabling statutes for local land use regulation. We informally refer to this new law as 160D, which is the name of the new chapter created in the North Carolina General Statutes. The Land Use Management Ordinance must be brought into alignment with Chapter 160D by July 1st. Many of the proposed amendments are minor and technical in nature, but due to the complex structure of the LUMO, we may find provisions that need amending to align with 160D over the next year or so. If so, we will compile them and bring them back to you periodically. As we have discussed previously, 160D requires the elimination of conditional use district zoning, which is the process of combining a legislative rezoning with a quasi judicial special use permit. Conditional use district zoning was developed to place conditions on rezonings, and conditional zoning replaces conditional use district zoning. And conditions may be placed on conditional zonings as well, provided that both the town and the applicant agree to those conditions. 160D also clarifies that planning commissions and other advisory boards should not make recommendations on special use permits. Instead, they are permitted to hold a preliminary forum, and the statute goes on to provide that no part of the forum or recommendation may be used as the basis for the decision by the board making the quasi judicial decision. Many of the LUMO text amendments are to define major and minor modifications to approved projects. In all cases, minor modifications may be approved by staff, and major modifications must proceed through the applicable development review process. An example of a major modification would be a change to the approved use or a change in the overall density of the project. The Federal Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act have long required that governments make reasonable accommodation to individuals with disabilities. A notable change is that 160D allows such accommodation to be processed as a variance. Previous law had said that personal circumstances should not be considered by the Board of Adjustment. Our current land use master plan provisions are only effectuated using special use permits. These changes allow master land use plans to be implemented using conditional zoning. 160D also requires alignment of certain definitions, like the definition of a special use permit, and suggests adding definitions for things like quasi judicial decisions and evidentiary hearings. 160D also prohibits the establishment of a minimum square footage requirement for dwellings. This provision was included to prevent municipalities from prohibiting tiny homes. The unintended consequence is that we must delete the portion of our inclusionary housing ordinance that mandates a minimum net livable square footage for affordable units. We have replaced the minimum square footage requirement with a statement that affordable units must be comparable in size to the market rate units. The authors behind 160D wanted to help municipalities understand the nature of their development reviews. Therefore, 160D distinguishes between administrative, legislative, and evidentiary hearings, rather than just calling them all public hearings. 160D also defines what type of development review decision is being made by the deciding body. Let me explain this idea of distinguishing between a legislative, quasi judicial, and administrative hearing and decisions. As you can see from this slide, land use decisions can be broken into legislative, quasi judicial, and administrative buckets. Legislative decisions are made by the Town Council and involve policy considerations and include the consideration zoning regulations, conditional zoning applications, and development agreements. Quasi judicial decisions require discretion when applying regulatory rules, and the rules of evidence and procedures must be followed. In Chapel Hill, the Board of Adjustment and Historic District Commission regularly consider such decisions and have evidentiary hearings. When the Town Council considers a special use permit, they are making a quasi judicial decision. There are also administrative decisions that require the application of objective standards, like setbacks, building height, lot size. These decisions are typically made by staff and the Planning Commission and can include administrative hearings. There is no discretion with these types of reviews. As I said before, because of 160D, LUMO amendments for you call out what type of hearing is appropriate, rather than just using the generic term of public hearing. As with all LUMO text amendments, it is necessary to evaluate if the proposed amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan. If our proposed amendments are consistent with the goals of Chapel Hill 2020 and staff's opinion. Staff's recommendation for the proposed LUMO text amendments is to open the public hearing, receive public comment, close the public hearing, and allow written public comment for 24 hours. For the Town Code amendments, staff's recommendation is that the council review the proposed amendments, receive public comment, and enact the Town Code amendments when the LUMO text amendments are heard on May 19th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can bring us back to full screen. All right, council members, are there clarifying questions? Ms. Ryan?
Under the minor modifications, changes that you're making, is there any change to the definition of what a minor modification would be?
So 160D does say that anything that changes the overall density that's been approved or any changes to the use would be defined as major. We have, for almost all of our development approvals, always had some sort of definition for minor modification, and that has been differentiated by the type of approval. We have not changed that at all through these amendments, other than, in some cases, we called them minor works. So we're now calling them minor modifications, or various things like that. We, what we do add are those two stipulations that it is defined as major if either one of those two things happens. Because in most cases, our classification of a major modification did not include those qualifiers. And so the amendments before you do.
Okay, so things like, I know there are places where staff can approve changes of, say, up to 5% in size of a building, that that would still be considered minor. So all the, all that that we've been doing for, for years now, that will still remain.
That will still remain, but as I said, we may be very well changing the term to minor modifications, just to align with 160D. And to be truthful with you, half of what's in your packet is that kind of minor change.
Okay, thank you. Any other clarifying questions? All right, I know we have a member of, of Ms. Gu.
Yeah, well, it's still, well, I think I'm clear to the legislative and administrative hearings. But for the special use permit, the quasi judicial, I think that I, I would like, well, how to define the role of advisory boards? And how is that evidential hearing different from other type of hearings that we have? How, and especially, I think, given the changes that are given to this special use permit hearing now, how the hearings that we conducted will be different from the past? And how do we know that the evidence that's presented to the council is objective and accurate? Is there any criteria, is there any, like, a list of the checkpoints that we need to do? I'm just, I just don't feel 100% confident or secure about what the process is going to be. I don't know what we can do, if there are other information sessions that you give to us. And I have some conversation with other advisory board members as well. I think there are some confusions for them as well. So I don't know what you can do or what is in the plan for our staff to make that more clear to both to us and to the advisory boards.
Certainly, so we will start helping with advisory boards and helping them to understand that. We've had a little bit of confusion, truthfully, because we went to them and had these conversations about the change in the SUP review process and an attempt to get their feedback. And then we had SUPs come before them recently. And so they were confused as to whether or not they could actually hear them, because we'd had these previous conversations. But yes, the ones that have happened recently, we are taking those recommendations to you as a part of your SUP applications. But after we enact the amendments and they become effective, then those recommendations from those boards will no longer move forward. So I do apologize for that confusion, that it was just a matter of bad timing, to be honest with you. In terms of, so at this point, none of those boards will be hearing the SUPs in the same manner that they have previously. And what will happen to you as the council is you will then be having evidentiary hearings that will then be in much the same way as you've always had them. And, and our town attorney, Ms. Anderson, will be helping you through those. But in terms of how an evidentiary structure, how you take evidence, who's allowed to speak, all of that will remain relatively the same, unless Ms. Anderson would prefer to change her process in some way. But that, I hope that that answers your question. And if you feel like we still need to have some clarifying conversations with our advisory boards, then I'll, I will do that.
I think that, using the example of last time, when we're hearing the special use. I think that using the example of last time, when we're hearing the special use permit hearing for the University Place, of course, our new process hasn't been in place yet. So I think if you can help the council to understand if the new process is in place, is there any differences in the way that we conduct our hearing? Is it okay, like, to propose demands or the asks to the applicant? Or should we just strictly evaluating the evidence that has been presented to us instead of proposing our own ideas and to see if the applicant is opening to those kind of requests? I don't know if those requests are still appropriate for those evidentiary kind of hearing. I need more guidance or clarifications in that regard.
So I will work with Ms. Anderson, and we will come back and help you provide, and provide you some additional information, if that's okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a member of the public wishing to speak. I know we have Mr. Post. I don't know if we have anyone else?
So far, Mr. Post is the only one.
Okay.
See Mr. Post in the list?
Oh, you don't see him in the list?
No, but you do have his petition.
We have a petition from Phil Post. Ms. Rogers, can you help us understand the, we normally receive and refer petitions, but is there anything from Mr. Post's petition we should be aware of at this point?
So he is questioning how we, as a town, have historically defined subdivision, and feels that it is not consistent with the state's definition. So staff's plan at this point is to meet next week and confer about this, and we'll come back to you if that's okay.
Yes, so I would need a motion for the council to receive and refer.
So moved.
To move by Mr. Parker, a second by Ms. Ryan. Any comments that just were receiving and referring to, and I would suggest just to the manager, I don't think I need to be part of this thing, go on. All right, roll call vote then. Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Boyancey?
Aye.
Ms. Goo?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Stigman?
Aye.
Mayor says aye as well. And then Ms. Rogers, do we need to vote? Not anything this evening?
We need to. You close and continue to May 19th?
Okay. Move by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Parker to close the public hearings. Sorry, I don't have this in front of me, sorry. All right. Any comments that haven't been shared already? All right, Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Boyancey?
Aye.
Ms. Goo?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Stigman?
Aye.
Mayor says aye as well, so thank you. Is there anything else we need to do on this item?
No ma'am, no ma'am, that's.
Well, thank you for keeping us on track to get through these 160Ds. I was hoping we wouldn't be having these next year, but apparently you think you're going to find more places we need to fix LUMO.
Yeah, truthfully, all the major policy things have been handled. There are no other policy conversations that we need to have that I'm aware of at this moment. But I'm just going to be really honest with you, you know, the LUMO is this thick. And our ordinance at this point is 61 pages, and we hope we caught 95% of them. But it would not surprise me if, you know, six months from now, we open it and go, oh, we missed this, so. But hopefully, we've caught it all.
Great. Oh, Mr. Post just arrived. Is he, sorry, everybody. Mr. Post, if you're there, we received your petition, and we referred it to staff, and they're going to confer next week to talk about that. So do you wish to share still with us? Oh, he's got his hand raised, so let's let him in. I don't see him coming in.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that very much. I'm very sorry to be tardy.
All right, well, thank you for sending in your petition, and we'll have staff get back with you on it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We will move to item number 15, open the public hearing application for conditional zoning at 2200 Homestead Road. One of our projects, very exciting. Anya, you're back with us again.
I'm back.
Welcome.
All right, so good evening, Anya Gronn with the Planning Department. Tonight, I'm here for a conditional rezoning at 2200 Homestead Road, and I have 13 slides, and this presentation should take about six minutes. The recommendation before you tonight is that we open the public hearing, receive comments in this meeting, and up to 24 hours via email at planning@townofchapelhill.org, and then enact the ordinance on May 19th. Here is where we are in the review process. It has been through multiple rounds of staff review, and it is now before you, the town council. A little bit of background about this site. The site is located on the north side of Homestead Road, and you can see it highlighted here in purple. It is currently zoned residential for conditional zoning district, and we're proposing to rezone it residential special standards conditional zoning district, or RSSCZD. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing gym building, as well as relocate the Hope Gardens that are currently on the southern end of the site up to the northern end of the site, in order to construct between 115 and 126 affordable housing units. And these units will be divided up amongst duplexes, townhouses, and apartments. So here is the site in relation to some nearby developments, and so you can see here to the northeast is Vineyard Square, directly to the east is Bridge Point, which is currently under final plan review, and you had recently seen a conditional zoning district for this application in December. And then across the street is the courtyard yards at Homestead. Here is a site plan view of the existing conditions. The red outline shows the property boundaries, and I've highlighted the stream segments here in blue. To the south is Homestead Road, to the east is Weaver Dairy Extension, and then the railroad tracks are directly west of this property, highlighted here in blue. Here is the proposed site plan. Again, the property boundaries are highlighted in red and the stream segments in blue. To the south is Homestead Road, and directly west in yellow is the railroad tracks. And the applicant is proposing to construct between 115 and 126 affordable housing units. The applicant is proposing several modifications to regulations. And so the first one has to do with this area between the stream segments. And so back in August of 2020, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality conducted a stream determination, and they found an intermittent stream segment on the west side here, and then a perennial stream segment on the east. And so the survey found that there was this wetland area, which is highlighted here in teal, between the two stream segments, even though there was no identifiable flow path between the two streams. So the wetland is considered a natural variant stream segment, and it falls under the town's carry down rule, which requires that the applicant connect the two stream segments with a 50-foot resource conservation district, or RCD buffer. And I've shown this area, and I'm highlighting it here with my mouse, if you can see it. So the applicant will be disturbing land between the stream segments in order to provide access between the units. And you can see that there's a driveline, a path that kind of goes between the two. The stream also hits two townhouses here, just on the edge. And so we've added a stipulation in the draft ordinance that will require the applicant to provide the final calculations of what this encroachment looks like at final plan stage, when they're actually able to go back and survey this area and clarify where that wetland area belongs. The applicant is also proposing some land disturbance within the RCD or Resource Conservation District area. The upland zone is limited to 40%, however, the applicant is proposing to disturb 84.7% of that upland zone. And then the streamside zone is limited to 20% of land disturbance, and they're proposing to disturb 26.2%. They are trying to, they're trying to focus the land disturbance on the upland zone, which is the furthest away from the stream to minimize damage to that wetland area and to the streamside zones. The applicant is also proposing some land disturbance within the steep slopes. And so they are proposing to exceed 25% of areas containing 25% or greater slopes. And only about 13,894 square feet of these slopes are natural slopes, and the applicant is proposing to disturb 43.6% of these natural slopes. This project has been through the multiple advisory boards and commissions. The Planning Commission and Housing Advisory Board did not have any additional comments for council. The Community Design Commission recommended that the applicant develop design guidelines that would include an option for a fence along Homestead Road, and the applicant has consented to this, and this is one of the stipulations in our draft ordinance. The CDC also requested that the council give the CDC the ability to approve the building elevations for this project. However, the applicant has not consented to this. The CDC has the authority to review the multifamily building designs, but not to approve it unless council gives them that authority. And the townhouse and duplexes are considered like single family, and so that is outside the purview of the CDC's review. And the applicant has not consented to give them the ability to review the townhouses and duplexes. At the Transportation and Connectivity Advisory Board, or TCAB, they asked that the developer work with Chapel Hill Transit on the placement of bus stops and forecast future demand and capacity of the HS bus route. Staff has included a condition that the developer will work both with the Chapel Hill Transit Department, as well as the North Carolina Department of Transportation and CDOT on the placement of bus stops on the north side of Homestead Road, which would be along the subject property. However, we felt that Chapel Hill Transit is probably best prepared to complete their own forecasting for future demand and capacity. TCAB had also asked that we ensure connectivity between the development and Hope Gardens, and so we've included a stipulation for this as well. And then at the Environmental Stewardship Advisory Board, or ESAB, they wanted to see permeable surfaces for the trails and parking lots, installation of solar panels, and incorporation of native plants into the wetland areas. We've worked with our Parks and Rec Department and found that the greenway does need to be concrete because it is flood prone. The architect is considering solar panels and determining whether or not some of the roofs can be made solar ready. And we do have a stipulation in the ordinance that requires an energy management plan. And then our standard stipulations address invasive exotic vegetation and species, as well as a landscape planting plan. So again, the recommendation before you tonight is to open the public hearing, receive comments in this meeting, and up to 24 hours via email at planning@townofchapelhill.org, and then enact the ordinance on May 19th. And with that, I'll turn it over to.
Thank you. Do we have, as an applicant, yeah, there we go.
Yes, we have an applicant presentation as well. Thanks, Emily's got that up. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lauren Clark, and I serve as your Executive Director for Housing and Community. And I'm very excited to be here tonight to introduce this item describing proposed affordable housing development on town-owned land located at 2200 Homestead Road. As you all know, this is one of our first, this is our first affordable housing development project on town-owned land, and we sincerely appreciate all of your support and encouragement as we've worked on this project for nearly the last four years to get to this point. Our development partners, all of whom are very familiar to you, have designed a project that we're all very proud of, and we look forward to your feedback and receiving feedback from the community tonight as well. So for tonight's presentation, Emily Holt, the town's Affordable Housing Development Officer, will provide a brief history of the project. Then Dan Levine of Self Help, representing the development team for the project, will share an overview. And then Dan Jewell and Jared Martenson, representing the design team, will walk you through the details of the development proposal. And afterwards, we will all be available for your questions. And so without further delay, Emily, I'll turn things over to you to start with the project overview.
Thank you, Lauren. My name is Emily Holt, and I'm the Affordable Housing Development Officer for the town. I'm just going to speak a little bit about the history of the project before passing it along. This project began almost four years ago when council dedicated the land for mixed income affordable housing. Shortly after that, town staff assembled an architect and engineering team to lead them through a concept planning process. We engaged a variety of community groups to gather input about what stakeholders wanted to see incorporated into the site and came up with a concept plan that reflected that input. That concept was received by council in spring of 2018. And with council's authorization, we identified a development partner and signed an MOU with the Homestead Housing Collaborative, as Lauren mentioned. This collaborative is a team of four local partners led by Self Help and working with Habitat for Humanity, CASA, and Community Home Trust. And this team was selected because of their local experience, but also because of their ability to fully address the diverse housing types and target populations that stakeholders and council had indicated they wanted to see at the site. So after that team came together, we put pen to paper. We engaged council and the community again to get additional feedback, and we submitted our conditional zoning application last fall, which has been under review, and we look forward to receiving feedback on this application this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Levine of Self Help.
Thanks, Emily. Appreciate that, and appreciate that introduction, Lauren. Just to go off script ever so briefly, since I'm in front of Council of Mayor, I do want to just compliment town staff. It's been really great for our development group to work with all of the staff on this project, both on housing and community and planning and other departments we've worked with. So appreciations for that. I'll also say we do have representatives of all of the members of the Housing Collaborative here as participants tonight, in case questions come up from council that are detailed enough that they're better suited to be addressed by partners. So just let us know. Clearly, the goals for this property are, you know, key goals, really, the point of this project was affordable housing, is affordable housing. And so, as you can see on the slide, you know, really looking to provide a range of incomes ranging from very, very low income to almost no income, disability insurance, et cetera, ranging up to middle income, moderate income housing. So if you look at the chart here, you'll see that a little bit over 25% of the units are targeted for people making under 30% of median income through CASA's rental housing. And then if you look at the below 60% of median income, which is typically the range that things like low income housing tax credit projects serve, nearly 60% of the units are reserved for those families that are kind of most in need and have the most difficulty accessing housing in our community. And then we do also have homeownership units that range all the way up to about 115% AMI for four of the units, and quite a few in the 80% AMI range too. So really trying to serve the full spectrum of housing needs in the community in one integrated project. You can advance the slide, Emily, thanks. And so another way to look at this is rental versus homeownership. You saw on the previous slide, 72 rental units, the balance are a mix of Habitat for Humanity and the Community Home Trust ownership units, both duplexes and townhomes. And again, both, you know, income-wise, but also in terms of family size and family type, we're really trying to provide a wide array of housing types and trying to work with community partners to serve people most in need of housing. So that would include, through the Horizons Program, women and their families who, where the women have been battling substance abuse disorders. Through the Horizons, partnership with CASA, working with people who have disabilities and trying to make sure there's a wide variety of housing choices for them. Working for people who are at risk of homelessness to make sure there's opportunities in this development for them. And then really not shown as much on the slide here, but of course, just the workforce of Chapel Hill and Orange County and beyond, really trying to make space in this community for people to become homeowners and long-term renters in our community in a great, safe place to live. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Jewell on the design team to talk a little bit more about the site plan and the project.
Thank you, Dan. You're a tough Dan to follow, but I will give it a shot. So good evening, everybody. Dan Jewell with CJT. Let me first say ditto what Dan said on all the hard work from staff. This project would not be where it is today without the dedication of Lauren's staff and the creative thinking of Judy Johnson and the planning staff on trying to come up with a project that really worked and really checked all the boxes with the LUMO. I will say also on a personal note, the fact that we, my team, including Wendy Ramsden in my office, who you know has been involved with this for four years now, going back to the beginning when we had the initial stakeholders meetings and met with all of the potential user groups, and believe you me, there are more user groups out there that we have not sadly been able to all serve on this site. So there's more need in Chapel Hill, and hopefully we can figure this out. But this is a huge step forward. This map, I just want to reiterate a couple of things. You know, you would, you would think driving by the site that it's remote, it's kind of out in the fringes of town, and there's not a whole lot around it, but that's not really true. If you look at the site there in the center, you'll see the great connections and adjacencies that we do have. Not the least of which is that we have the. Not the least of which is that we have the Northern Community Park there, just a little bit to the right of the site. Literally, there are sidewalks and trails in place already where you could walk to the Aquatic Center. It's only four tenths of a mile, so that's really close. And a little bit farther to get to the ball fields and the playgrounds. Just across the street is the, and down a bit, is the Senior Center, which folks would be able to use. And if you follow those magenta lines, those dash magenta lines, which are sidewalk systems, you're just seven tenths of a mile walk to Chapel Hill High School and just a mile to the middle school and the elementary school. And just as importantly, maybe more importantly, we are on a bus route. So that bus route can, and we're proposing to put a stop in front of the site. You'll see that in a second. So we'll have service because we suspect we'll have a high percentage of the population that not only does not have automobiles, but we hope they don't need automobiles to get back and forth where they need to be. And we're just eight tenths of a mile to get over to MLK, where the North-South BRT will hopefully be built soon. And we're also close, if you look just above, to the Green Track. I know there's a lot of interest in that. The town has done a lot of planning on that. And someday, we hope there'll be a need to get over there. And last but not least, at the request of Parks and Rec, which we think is a great request, we will be constructing a section of Greenway Trail along that railroad track through this site there along the left side of the property. Next slide, Emily. So these are just a few of the details of the site plan. I'll just start at the top. So Hope Gardens has been a resident of this site for many, many years now. And we have been working closely with them since day one. We will actually be providing new space for their facility at the upper end of the site off of Weaver Dairy Road Extension. That's at the very top of the page there. They'll have room for gardens and some parking spaces offsite. And you see a little bit of lighter green area that starts trending down into that narrow area from there. Those will actually be community gardens and orchards and fruit trees and things of that nature. So it's, I guess technically it's development if you call doing gardens development, but that's what we're going to be doing in those places there. The proposed, the site is 13 acres. We have a total disturbance of a little bit over 10 acres. By the numbers, we have 72 apartments, one, two, and three-bedroom. We have 27 to 35 townhomes. Jared Martinson can explain that in a minute, which would be two- and three-bedroom units. And 18 duplexes. Those are the units along the backing up to the railroad tracks there on the left side. And I forgot to mention the apartments are the yellow buildings there in the middle clustered around. We're providing 175 total parking spaces. So that's roughly one and a half per unit, but we know some folks will need more, some folks will need none. But after all of the talks with the various stakeholders, that felt like the number that we needed to provide. Other amenities will be the Greenway Trail that we build along the railroad track. Nature trails throughout. We heard from you several times that we wanted to connect folks and bring them into the natural areas of the site and the areas that we're restoring. We're creating small green gathering spaces throughout the property. We're creating a central green area with playgrounds, shelters, grills, things of that nature. We are constructing a basketball court there just above the stormwater pond in the middle of the page. I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes as well. And I mentioned the Hope Garden as well. So what I would like to do is pause for a minute, though, and just say, you know, this slide, I talked about the physical improvements that are proposed for the community. But more important than just being parts and pieces, these elements are combined in a way to make a whole, to create a place. And that place we've attempted to create is a safe, comfortable, and sheltering environment for a constituency that may have experienced housing insecurity their entire lives. And we're doing that by designing the buildings and the spaces around and between the buildings that provide defensible space where needed, but also opportunities for interaction where desired. And most importantly, a connected, nurturing environment that will not only help enrich these folks' lives, but allow a semblance of normalcy to their lives. I thought that was important to put that out there. Next slide, please, Emily. So we heard great comments from you during the initial concept plan presentation back three years ago in June of 2018, and again, last year in May. And rather than taking up a lot of your time and going over the responses, I just want to hit the highlights of what you asked that we did respond to. And that was looking at egress and traffic at the new driveway. Are there enough larger units in the mix? We think we've checked that box there. Limit the RCD disturbance. We are doing some RCD disturbance, but I'll talk in a minute on another slide about what we're doing to limit that. Is there enough outdoor community space and indoor space like a clubhouse? We've provided more, and we are providing an indoor space as well. Concerns about pedestrian safety. We've worked hard to create a good connected series of pedestrian bike and pet networks that minimize any crossing over roads and driveways, things of that nature. We'd like to see the pond and the recreation areas more incorporated in the community. I believe we've been able to do that, too. That becomes a central focus, a central green space, not only for relaxation and recreation, but also for education. Next slide, please, Emily. The apartment buildings should be clustered, and we have done that. You know, I'll bring the slide up in a minute. You'll see that. Is there enough parking? We think we have just the right amount of parking right now based on the user interviews that we have done. Can we fit any more units on the site? You can always fit more, but then there's always a compromise between how much more impact can the site stand? But we think we've created a great balance now between the number of units on the site and the impacts that we are doing, but trying to further avoid. And can we provide more connections to adjacent sites? We certainly can. In fact, Emily, if you'll go to the next slide. Thank you. What we have actually done, we have coordinated quite a bit with the developers who are doing Bridgepoint Next Door. We've coordinated sidewalk connections to them. We've actually coordinated a vehicular connection with them. There'll be a shared access drive off of Homestead Road that will access their property, access our property. That way, we're not creating two new driveways onto Homestead Road. There'll be good pedestrian connections there. There's an existing pedestrian connection up to Vineyard Square that we will be tying into as well. If you see that boardwalk area labeled just above the clusters of buildings up on sort of the upper right side of the Resource Conservation District area, there'll be pedestrian connections there. We've also got many connections into the property, both from the street, multiple connections over to the Greenway Trail, which again, I've shown that travels along the railroad tracks there. But plenty of sidewalks within the community, connecting the spaces, keeping people out of parking lots, not interacting with cars and things of that nature. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Resource Conservation District. Anya did a good job of describing the requests we were making for that disturbance. But there are two areas of Resource Conservation District on this property. The first is a perennial stream on the right portion of the site, sort of under where that boardwalk node is. And as you know, there's a streamside RCD, there's a managed-use RCD, and an upland RCD. We are doing a limited amount of grading and revegetation in the streamside RCD, putting a boardwalk over that so that folks can get back and forth. We're doing some additional grading and just a tiny bit of paving in the managed-use RCD. But most of that work is grading to allow the pond to be built and some of the slopes that allow our parking to go in place. And then there's some disturbance in the upland RCD, and that would be the parking that has to go around the buildings. And that parking not only is needed for the buildings, but we also need to provide access for fire trucks, for the ladder trucks to get around this site. So they need to be able to get on all sides of those buildings up to the north. And then there's also a little bit of RCD encroachment over to the far left of the page where it says boardwalk. The Greenway Trail will cross over the Resource Conservation District, so there'll be a little bit of impact there as well. But we hope that what we've done is we kind of right-size the amount of impact of the RCD while trying to balance the number of units. And hopefully you feel that what we've done is worth it to be able to get the housing that we all need on the site. But we're doing it at great expense. We're actually installing retaining walls on either side of that wetland area that Anya described a few minutes ago, just so that we can minimize the disturbance in that. The, go to the next page if you could, please, Emily. This is the same plan. I'd like to kind of wrap on this before I hand it off. But we've zoomed in a little bit, and I've overlaid this on the existing aerial photo, and there's a reason for that. We know that some of the folks in Vineyard Square are concerned about the impacts to their property with some development of the site behind their homes. That's understandable. They've enjoyed woods and birds for all of the years since they've lived there. What I would like to say, though, is, again, the portion a little bit north, the clearing that we're doing is simply for the Hope Gardens people. They will be putting community gardens and orchards in that area. It's not any kind of active use other than when folks are out there during the week doing their weeding and harvesting and things of that nature. The basketball court, though, will be a bit more of an impact. We feel the basketball court is extremely important because as the kids, the children in this community get maybe a little too old to participate in the playground areas and some of those areas, we did want to provide them an outlet for something to do. So that basketball court is located just north of that storm pond. What I would like to point out, though, is that basketball court is at least 120 feet from the closest house. There will be at least 60 feet of natural woods preserved between those homes and the basketball court. And those lighter circles that are shown on there are actually new plantings that we will do, things like hollies and cedars and things of that nature, evergreen trees that will grow up over time and further provide that buffer. So again, we certainly understand the concerns of the neighbors, but we are doing what we can to minimize that. And of course, I know we can commit to not having lights on the basketball court so there's nobody out there at night, which would be huge. So with that, I think I've rambled on quite enough. And what I'd like to do now with this slide is hand it over to Jared Martinson with MHA Works, and he can talk in a little bit more detail about how the buildings function and these community spaces that we've created on the site to provide other opportunities for folks to gather and mingle. Jared?
Thank you and good evening. I get the pleasure of following two Dans and taking us home this evening with the remainder of the presentation. But good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jared Martinson. I'm an architect with MHA Works. It's a pleasure to share my time with you this evening. Emily, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So the project has advanced substantially since the concept plan that we presented in 2018 and then also in what we shared with you right around a year ago in 2020. But I did want to pause here at the beginning and been really set up that the development team's focus on maintaining town goals has been consistent throughout the process. Specific to building and site design, it's been an open and collaborative effort between each member of the development team, both the site design team and the vertical development partners, each member of town staff, including Brian Peterson, the town's urban designer, and the members of the design team. Continuing with some of the dialogue that Dan previously mentioned, I did want to immediately point out that Brian Peterson's input helped inform a site plan with more connected green spaces, impactful common spaces, increased offsite connections, and also onsite connections to the greenway that Dan Jewell mentioned. Specific to the building massing in height, which is represented here illustratively, really, our focus was maintaining a consistency of height and massing with the adjacent communities that were illustrated in some of the earlier slides. The two-story townhomes and the duplexes are around the perimeter of the site and have gabled and shed roofs. The three-story apartment buildings located towards the center of the site, where grading kind of dips down a little bit, also have similar roof styles and massing that is consistent with adjacent neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So we've worked closely with each vertical development partner on concept or schematic building design. And these efforts have focused on primarily, at this point, the individual residential unit plans, the building's relationship with the site to inform the development considerations of each partner and advanced site design that we're presenting to you this evening. This effort led to establishing a foundation for building design for each housing type, which provides flexibility for each developer, specific to their budget, and the housing opportunities that they're looking to provide to our community. We understand that the overall project goal will be to enlist the services of a single design team moving forward for the advancement of both the site and vertical design considerations. And we understand from town staff that each building will be required to be submitted through the CCP process, which Anya kind of mentioned a little bit upfront. But I did want to mention or tie in on that to say that we understand that the townhomes and the duplexes would follow a single-family's ECP, which is more administrative. And the apartments for the workforce housing for CASA and the Horizons building would follow a more traditional zoning compliance permit process. Specific to this initial building design, our conversations with Brian Peterson included identifying a common design aesthetic that can be used to define the character of this community that we're looking to create, which includes common design details that can be shared among all the buildings and structures on the site. Patio areas and yards have been considered and incorporated around townhome and duplex units, which are slightly more private. And shared and common yards have been incorporated for the apartments, which are located towards the center of the site. We've worked hard to include common green spaces and recreation amenities for the entire community. And as Dan Jewell mentioned, those are also kind of scattered throughout the site. I also wanted to point out that we worked hard to utilize glazing in an exterior covered space for the community room, which is located in one of CASA's workforce apartment buildings, right there at the center of the site. And that's a space that CASA is providing, they would be managing, but they would be providing for the use of all members of the community here. Next slide, please. So a key focus of the public spaces and community amenities has been a reinforcement of site connectivity and an enhancement of the pedestrian experience. We've looked to create a central community green space with playground, shelter, picnic tables, grills, and seating, community space in the apartment buildings, which I just mentioned, nature trails throughout the retained forest areas and around the pond and wetland, which include pedestrian connections to adjacent neighborhoods, some of which I believe are already there and heavily used. The Greenway Trail along the west length of the neighborhood, between our development and the existing train tracks. We also look to create multiple small green spaces throughout the site with bike parking facilities, shaded seating, as well as central mail collection. The community garden that Dan mentioned earlier, I think it's important to note that our efforts in working with the garden and their group has been to focus on an opportunity to not only include them in perpetuity within the community that we're looking to develop, but also provide them the greatest opportunity to succeed. And so by shifting them to the north of the site, which was previously not considered as part of the development opportunity, it allows them to relocate prior to construction. So they're not disturbed while construction occurs for the. while construction occurs for the site or the vertical development. And lastly, we are looking to create a community that strengthens the bonds between the neighbors and promotes social resiliency, a little bit similar to what Dan Joel mentioned a few minutes ago. And with that, I think that's the closing of our presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you. Can you bring us back to full screen? Councilmembers, we have a number of public wishing to speak, but we want to get your clarifying questions first. Ms. Anderson?
Well, first of all, thank you for all the hard work. It's really exciting that this is moving along. First question, how many units are ADA accessible?
Jared, can you answer that?
I can. So, at the workforce apartments, the ground floor units would meet the commercial building code requirements for type A adaptable units. No unit on this site is required under the building code to be fully accessible. There's levels of adaptability, and so we will be meeting the percentages needed for the workforce apartment buildings. So, if I were to do a count, it would be 5%, probably between 5 and 8 would be that type A adaptable.
And are, so you're saying there's none that are fully ADA?
No, ma'am.
And is it possible to get any of them ADA? I mean, is that like a huge cost prohibitive move? Because it just seems like something that we would want here.
It's not necessarily a cost prohibitive move, and it's definitely something that we could look at more with each vertical development partner.
Okay. And obviously, I'd be curious what my colleagues thought. So there, it seems like, and I understand not all of the RCD encroachment is like, you know, building, but, and that it's in the upper zone, but I'm just wondering, especially given that some of this is close to the railroad tracks, why we can't go taller and preserve a little bit more of the RCD here?
Again, I think Jared, you may be able to help with that, but I know there are other architectural and code implications when buildings go taller, rather than the way we have them laid out now. Is that correct?
There are. So, the apartments are very much at the request of the development partners, currently being considered as more of like a garden-style apartment. Those typically max out at three stories. Once they hit four, there's additional building code requirements that need to be met, which adds cost to the product. The Horizons Building, which is kind of the larger building planned south, is also currently at three stories. It could potentially go higher based on its more robust construction type, but the use and program of the building was met in those three stories. And so then around the perimeter, the townhomes and the duplexes were very much at the request of each partner again to be of that same height. And as I think I mentioned, we're also trying to step down the scale at the perimeter to be respectful to the neighboring communities.
Okay, got it. And then my final question was, it looks like on page 428, that y'all were open to our urban designers' suggestions, but hadn't done all of them yet, like flipping the ends and, you know, so there would be some more light and, you know, it's kind of the, so there wouldn't be everything backing onto Homestead. I'm just wondering if those are in progress or if that's like still a conversation item?
Yes, ma'am. It's very much still a conversation item. We've met with the Community Home Trust to discuss the opportunities and shared some sketches with them to begin to advance the idea of how that would not only impact the product, the housing types that they're looking to put to, you know, to market, but the impact that it would also have on the site development itself. For example, if I might digress for a second, the entry to the site, it kind of doesn't maybe make as much sense to rotate those units because it would put somebody's front door directly adjacent to the primary entry of the site. So, we're looking closely at that, and it's definitely on the table.
And also the Central Park space that Brian had recommended?
I believe we have that Central Park space clustered around the CASA workforce apartment buildings, the Horizon buildings, as it kind of trends northwest and connects to some of the green spaces and the pavilion and the playground.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd only jump in just to add a little bit more flavor on the accessibility question, councilwoman, that you raised. You know, I think a lot of that is when individual partners have prospective tenants or prospective buyers, meeting them where they are, since obviously the range of accessibility modifications can vary greatly. So rather than kind of trying to put everything on every unit and seeing who comes in the door, it's really a way of meeting people where they are and making sure that those needs are accommodated. So just to add that to the kind of technical answer that Jared provided.
It was a little bit technical. I appreciate that. And without going into more technicality, I do want to say that, you know, at least in the apartment buildings, each building is designed to be adaptable for accessibility. It's just as Dan mentioned, rather than kind of doing it upfront, they're going to see who those tenants are.
That makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
Other clarifying questions? Ms. Gu?
I'm just wondering, among the below 30% AMI population, is there any units that will be made available for the manufactured housing residents?
So we've, I can take that one. What we've talked about with town staff is wanting to make sure that as the town continues to engage with residents of manufactured housing, whether they're at immediate risk of displacement or not, that word gets out about what the waitlist and application process is, both for homeownership and rental housing. And knowing that, you know, there's a lot of timing considerations, of course, as to when this project comes in line versus when somebody might be looking to move. So that's the approach we've taken is to, you know, to try to make sure that that communication is happening. And so if people are interested in applying, whether it's to be renters or homeowners, that that process can start sooner than later. I don't know if town staff, if you have anything else to add to that?
No, I don't have anything else to add. Nate, Nate, it just popped up on the screen.
No, I was just going to say that that's very much in line with the plans that we've discussed as town staff is partnering. As has been mentioned in this presentation, all of the partners on the development team are local partners that we work with all the time. And so we're, will, already been planning to work with several of them on engagement and tapping them into existing resources and getting them connected into homeownership programs as well as market rental programs. So that's already kind of in the works. And that's one of the benefits of having these local partners that we already have relationships with is we already have plans to be working with them on a topic that is connected to affordable housing in the community.
Well, I'm hoping if it's possible or it's legal to do so, that we will have special outreach to the manufactured housing community, working with the community organizations, and to reach out to them and see, make sure that they understand here is the opportunity that we have. If we can help them in any way to resolve at least, well, even if it's just like partial of the problems, I think it will be tremendously helpful. So another question is, for you mentioned about the population with disability, can you give more information about what, because, you know, it's a huge diverse population? Can you just give some more informations? Because I have actually heard several inquiries from people from adult autism community asking those housings, it's a crisis actually in North Carolina. So I don't know if it is within the planning that you have. So if you can give more information, I can share with the community.
Sure. I mean, I know all of the individual housing partners, the Home Trust and Habitat and CASA, both have experience and interest in serving, you know, diverse range of people with disabilities. And so, you know, in the planning process, we've had a lot of conversations with PACC as one of the groups that works with adults with intellectual disabilities. But we also, you know, I think all of the partners would welcome any other connections. And what we're really trying to manage is providing good information because each partner has different criteria and, you know, there's fair housing rules and other things that they need to abide by in terms of kind of who gets in line and who gets through the process. And so I think any of the partners would welcome, not just for this project, but in general, any connections that can be made so that they can inform families or individuals about their specific process. And, you know, I wish it was as simple as a kind of one-stop shop where you can streamline all the information, but there is just nuance depending on financing source and rental versus ownership and criteria. So really, I think where our group has landed is wanting to make sure that it's clear that each partner is available to walk people through the process and make sure they have the information they need to apply.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hope Housing is going through the Launch Incubator Program right now. That's the parents have gotten together to form the Housing Coalition for Persons with Disabilities. So I'm hoping that y'all are connected with them as well. Any other clarifying questions? Ms. Ryan?
In the place where the wetland is, where you're putting the road through to those northern townhomes, is there, are you connecting the streams with a culvert underneath that?
Yes, ma'am. We're putting actually an oversized culvert in, one that's much larger than needed, so that there's still some opportunity for a wildlife passage through there and things of that nature.
Okay. And I see that you have dumpsters. Will the townhomes and the duplexes have regular town trash pickup? Or will everybody be using the dumpsters?
We assume there'll be regular town pickup. We probably need to confirm that with the town. But yes, the trash needs to be picked up.
Yep. And, yeah, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I had two questions. Myself had a question today that come in from neighboring community about the parking along the main entrance to this development here, since it's the main entrance for both Bridgepoint and, and how wide that drive aisle is for people parking and considering that people are going to be entering and exiting and trying to park at the same time. Can you, you might want to share the screen back to?
Sure. Emily, would you mind pulling the screen back up and going to one of the site plan slides?
While you're pulling that up, also, Dan, I think on the dumpster question, that the idea is that all, even townhomes and others would bring their waste to the dumpsters. So I just want to jump in on that, and you can kind of point out that is one of the reasons that there are multiple dumpsters on the site to make that convenient.
Thanks for that clarification, Dan.
Yeah.
So the, the, the zone where the parking will be, the 90-degree parking, the aisle itself is 25, 26 feet wide, so it's plenty wide for cars to maneuver back and out, back and in and out. And the portion of the property, the driveway where we hit Homestead Road, obviously, we have one lane in and two ways out, so there's no parking there. So we wanted to make sure that was straight and easy to see so that if there's a car traveling down and somebody's backing out, they've got plenty of opportunity to see each other.
Okay.
I'd also like to point out, ma'am, that it's, each aisle was sized both for parking and fire access.
Right. Good. That's helpful. We've had that issue before. You'll leave that slide up. Is there any consideration to putting in pervious pavers for part of the parking that's actually in the RCD area?
We've not gotten to that level of detail yet, but that's certainly something that we can, we can chat with the team about when we get to working out the details for a zoning compliance permit.
And I know that did come up from, I think it was the Environmental Stewardship Advisory Board. And, you know, it's something we committed to look at in our next pricing exercise. I mean, to be frank, there's both pricing considerations upfront, but also in terms of maintaining pervious pavement. And, you know, I think in design team chime in if I'm misguided, but I think there's some questions about effectiveness in these kind of clay soils in the long run as to whether they really remain permeable over the not-too-long run. So definitely on our mind to investigate further, but weren't willing to commit to it because of those things we needed to explore.
I know they've had success with botanical gardens with theirs, but I know the soil types could be different. Just it's a, the product that people are exploring, they're making a better product these days. But just, we have a lot of concerns about pervious materials in the RCD and what that does to the overall projects.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, let's hear from our public. We're glad people have stayed with us to share their opinions. We will be calling you in two at a time. We ask that you stay in your three-minute limit if at all possible. And if you didn't pre-register, you can raise your hand and we will add you to the list to speak. Mr. Parker will be calling you in, and then we'll ask you to start your video and unmute yourself. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, we have Linda Wells followed by Emily Tsai.
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Hi. I'm still concerned about the basketball court. At the very beginning, you put a slide up that said how close Homestead Park was and that they could have access to that. If you're thinking about the basketball court for older children, the older children can do the 4/10 of a mile and go to Homestead Court, especially since the basketball court is such a point of contention with Vineyard Square. I applaud what else you're doing. I applaud what you're doing to protect the wetland and the stream, but I think the basketball court needs to be dropped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Emily Tsai followed by the Hope Gardens Board Chair, who has not shared her, is her name with us?
Welcome.
Hi. So I live in the neighborhood near the 2200 Homestead Development. And I attended the Planning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I actually just wanted to say how supportive I am of the development. I think it looks like you're doing a great job. I've heard for years the need for affordable housing here in Chapel Hill, and it's really heartening to see the town taking the steps to address this and in what I think is a very thoughtful way. I really like the, the community spaces that are planned in the development, the hiking path that's planned, the access to public buses and to Homestead Park, the plans to expand the Hope Gardens. So I guess I just generally wanted to indicate my overall support for the project. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the Hope Gardens Board Chair followed by Nancy Oats. Do we know who the Hope Garden Board Chair is? Raise your hand to let us know who you are.
Blessing greetings to everyone. This is Makita. I'm the current Hope Gardens Board Chair.
Welcome.
Well, okay. Hope Gardens is a nonprofit organization that is student-run with the guidance, support, and oversight of a board of directors, which is composed of community members. We have some beautiful, talented, gifted board of directors. We are looking forward to this new phase of development and grateful to expand its program by offering opportunities to the Chapel Hill Carboro community, creating a community space that fosters relationships and provides education. The community gardeners have been impacted greatly to hold a space to nurture Mother Earth. In the future, we look forward to further discussions with the appropriate parties to make the relocation process smooth. We truly would greatly appreciate the continued support of the town. We truly would greatly appreciate the continued support of the town in providing resources needed to facilitate Hope Gardens relocation. Give thanks.
Thank you. You've done, you do amazing job out there and engage a lot of folks, and I like the beekeeping too. Good, all right. Ms. Oats, welcome.
Nancy Oats followed by Mary Ann Barnett.
You're muted, Nancy. You're muted.
Here we go. Missed my best lines. I thank you. I'm Nancy Oats. I'm a longtime advocate for affordable housing. Many of us in the community have reached out to the town and the nonprofits to encourage that the 2200 project be developed as a cohesive neighborhood. This is a challenging parcel. When the town acquired it as a green buffer to offset the high density of Vineyard Square, it was considered undevelopable because of the RCD and the steep slopes. And I'm concerned about the corners that I see being cut. One concern is the lack of connectivity. The road from Bridgepoint, as you pointed out, does dump into a parking lot at 2200 Homestead Road. For pedestrian safety and traffic flow, it needs to be a full street. The cars will be backing out into traffic just like at the parking lot of the Estes Drive post office with all its bottlenecks and fender benders. The parking spaces could be moved over to where the concrete path with the bollards is. And that also brings up the other, another concern that I have during the approval process for the market rate property across the street, the town said that using bollards or anything less than a full street for the points of egress put residents at risk, but now that these are subsidized units, the staff is no longer concerned about the risk, and that concerns me. Without a true connection to Bridgepoint, the only exit from 2200 will be up a steep hill, similar to going out the parking lot at the Chamber of Commerce. Cars have to accelerate to get up to the top to the sidewalk, and then they wait on an incline for the traffic to clear. And connectivity is important for social reasons too. Council's resolution for 2200 was for it to be a mix of market rate and subsidized units, and then the town staff shifted it to subsidized units in between two market rate neighborhoods. Segregating the 2200 from its market rate, market rate neighbors puts a stigma on it that is uncomfortable. My second concern is the build-out timeline. Right now, none of the four nonprofits has the money to build. Two of the nonprofits are currently committed to building other developments that will require substantial funds, and another nonprofit is part of the UNC School of Medicine, and the state has mandated the budget cuts across the university system. All of the nonprofits are going to be competing for the same limited number of tax credits and government assistance, and that means a very real shortage of money to complete the project in a timely manner. So the town needs a plan for what happens if only a few units are built and those homeowners sit in a clear-cut construction zone for years like Caraway Village. One solution is for the town to do land leases for all of the nonprofits as it's doing for Community Home Trust, so that if one of the nonprofits can't build the housing, the town can step in. The town needs to acknowledge some of the challenges that this development is facing and address them. Many of the people who will live in this neighborhood are essential workers, and it's troubling to me that the town is not holding itself to the same high standard that it holds for market rate developers, and I urge the town to show more respect for the future residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary Ann Barnett followed by Michael and they listed together, Michael and Hestine Nicholson.
Welcome, Ms. Barnett.
Hello. Thank you. I'm a resident right there at Sonoma Way, so this is right in my backyard. I want to thank everybody for the tremendous work you're doing. I just want to make sure you guys all know that we already have affordable housing units on our street. So as a community, we are very connected with one another, and actually, some of the residents that are going to be impacted are the affordable housing units that are at the end of the street. They have a very little bit of space where that basketball court is going to be. So I'm a basketball player and I take my kids over to Homestead Park to play, which is a great basketball court, and there should be another basketball court over there. So I'm a little bit surprised on that thing. Everybody's really kind of into this, what's going on and what you want to build and I don't know, I'm not eloquent on all the details that you guys have, but it's a great thing and we need affordable housing in Chapel Hill, but I would ask for all of you to go and check out this strip of land. It's very small, really. Like I look out behind me, there's a little waterway, the railroad track, Hope Gardens. There's not, what you're proposing in my mind, and I'm not very good at the conceptual thing, but it's pretty tight. So you want to take a look at the impact on the residents and do you want to be hearing like basketball going on? You know, at 10 o'clock at night. Now, I noticed the developer said something about like going to turn the lights off. That's good, but realize what we all do, we go over, it's such a cool neighborhood. You just walk over to Caroline Woods, you just walk over to Homestead Park and you play basketball there. So no one's really opposed to it, but it's the basketball court could really cause a problem with the noise level. So that's my input. Thank you so much for everybody and the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael and Hestine Nicholson followed by Philip Austin.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you, council members, Madam Mayor, Mr. Jewell, Mr. Martenson and company for taking the time to hear us on this one. I ditto what Ms. Barnett just said about the narrow sliver of land. We are, for the most part, convinced that the constant drumming of basketball and shouting and, you know, fun recreation will be a den for those of us who, you know, even in our homes backing up to that basketball court would have to endure. I don't know whether consultation has happened with the Chapel Hill Parks and Recreation Department about whether other accommodations might be made, but we strongly ask that the basketball court be deleted from these plans and if that beautiful little strip of forest corridor, some of that native woods that's back there be allowed to remain, that would be a boon. It would, it's an air cleanser. It buffers sound from the I-40. We enjoy the little tracks of the coal train back through, but it is also a sound deadening factor for that train. And it's just too tight a space. 120 feet, 40 yards from the back of a house, the back of a property is not sufficient to blot the sound of basketball day and night. Also, I suppose that other kids, neighbors from adjacent neighborhoods, not just the new 2200 Homestead neighborhood would be pouring in to use that basketball court as well. So it would kind of be maxed out and a constant drum of noise is what our concerns are, and the wildlife factor is an issue too.
And this, we believe that these, the modifications that we are suggesting would benefit not only us that live in Vineyard Square, but also the residents of 2200 Homestead.
Right. Get some peace and quiet. Nature trails, you know, that's sweet.
Yeah, and we are, we are Community Home Trust owners, so we are very well aware and very appreciative of the concept of affordable housing, and we, we don't want to deny that to anyone, but we we would just respectfully ask for these changes.
And one question quickly. It sounded like some of you alluded to this, but did council and other representatives receive the almost unanimous petition that we submitted a couple of days ago? Did that come across?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Philip Austin followed by Neil Bench.
Welcome.
Philip, thank you. So my question is, if the town council can answer it, and if the developers have addressed it, if this is a flood-prone area, why are we thinking about building there?
I'm not sure. Mr. Jewell, do you want to answer anything or Mr. Levine?
Happy to, yes. It's not a flood-prone area. The studies have been done, the mapping has been done. It is, it is not flood-prone.
So there was someone in this conversation tonight that said this is a flood-prone area. And of course, we're looking at this, all these wetlands, and so we can, we can imagine how that, that happens. But I mean, has anyone addressed this particular issue?
And I think, Mr. Austin, you might be referencing the comment by staff about the Greenway Trail that runs near the railroad tracks, portion of that being flood-prone, which is quite far from any of the housing. I, I think that might be what you're referencing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Neil Bench followed by Abby Bodish.
Welcome, Mr. Bench.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Hi, hello, Mayor and Town Council. This is Neil Bench. Just as a clarification, yes, I am a member of the Planning Commission, and yes, we have seen this item, but tonight I'm speaking to you as a resident of Chapel Hill and a member of the Hope Gardens Board of Directors. Just wanted to say that currently, Hope, currently and always, Hope Gardens is a 100% student-run organization, number one. It's been in existence since 2008, and with all the turnover of students and everything, they've kept it going, and it's continued to grow over the last 13 years. They're very excited about interfacing with a residential community and with the possibility of additional gardening, which is great. The, the only question that we ask, or not we ask, but we hope for, is that the garden's footprint and the new location, the site work can be done as stated, I think it was by Dan, Dan, the other Dan, that it can be done before the site work for the development with the goal of the Hope Gardens and the community plot renters not, being able to not lose a growing season. That would be phenomenal for, for all parties involved. Also, following me will be Abby Bodish. She is one of the current Hope Gardens co-chairs. And again, the garden is 100% student-run. It's a great benefit to both the UNC students that are involved in the town itself. And the current garden is about a half acre in footprint. The goal, which it looks like the site plan does include this, is to have a garden of approximately similar size for Hope Gardens, which includes again the community garden plots, and then having the possibility of extending the garden and also allowing for, again, the opportunity for additional gardening for the residents of the upcoming community. And Abby will also be talking about the interest in the students and upcoming students getting involved in that possibility, because I mean, that's one of their main goals is staying involved with the community. So thank you very much. Good luck and it looks like a great plan. Thanks.
Thank you. I do want to affirm that the developers are talking about making sure the garden transitions so that you don't lose a growing season in that time. So I know there'll be some coordination that'll need to happen for that to happen. That is the goal.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did leave out one sentence. Sorry about this. Not a sentence, but obviously gardens don't just move, and there are big parts of putting a garden together and not so, not so big parts. Two things hopefully will happen, and that is the development team and the, and the town itself will provide, you know, resources for site preparation and then also perhaps some of the heavier duty work to get the footprint of the garden going. And also, you referenced volunteerism earlier in the meeting, and your Chapel Hill Adopt a Trail program that is, seems to be well, well-intacked now and moving forward, has spoken with the Hope Gardens leadership team and is looking forward to possibly putting together a volunteer day to assist with garden relocation. So it has the possibility of being a great community effort, but of course, it will take some, some resources from the town. The current garden also has a well and electricity, and we look forward to having a well and electricity at the new site. Those would need to be worked out, but the goal is not to water with wassa-treated water. We think that's a better idea, but we'll see what happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Abby Bodish, and I see a Michael Bodish listed on my sheet here, but I don't see him among our participants.
Welcome, Ms. Bodish.
Hi, I am one of the student co-chairs with Hope Gardens, and I just wanted to briefly say, first of all, thank you to the development team and continuing this dialogue over the past four years with the garden, especially given the constant turnover of students and who you all have been communicating with. We really appreciate your flexibility working with us and taking our questions and concerns into your consideration. I did want to mention that Hope Gardens is really excited about the possibility of working with this new community and expanding our community gardener group to include this new housing development and incorporating them into our hopefully growing and improving space for the garden. Yeah, thank you, guys. Really appreciate you all and all that you do.
Thank you.
And we now have Susan Nassar has raised her hand. So is Nassar?
Okay, hello, thank you. I'll be really brief because you've already gotten a letter from me. And I'll start my video here. Okay, you've gotten a letter and you've gotten a letter from many of my neighbors. I just want to say that I do appreciate that you all are limiting this to three levels. Not only, well, it's consistent with the area, but in general around Chapel Hill, I worry about that. Thank you. I'm going to get back, of course, again to the basketball court. Someone stated that it's 110 feet from homes. I don't, that probably means back to the back door of homes. There's also little gardens where people, it's the only place anybody can have any privacy in our neighborhood, and 110 feet is not very far. And this basketball court will be used from sunrise to sunset, not only by children who are too old for the playground, but frustrated adults. Can you imagine a basketball bouncing 12 hours a day at least outside your own home? I just ask you to all please think about that. And about the nature trails around the quote retained forest areas, right now, the only retained forest area I see is a little square about the size of the basketball court just north of the basketball court. So there really are no, as far as I can see, no retained forest areas, and of course, that's something we're also asking that be considered. So that's it. I don't want to be too redundant with what I've already written. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that appears to be it. There were no further raised hands.
Great. We'll bring it back to council now. Council members, comments? Ms. Brian?
Okay, so I'd like to first thank everybody who's worked so hard on this project. It's a really exciting thing for the town and for our residents, so kudos to everybody who's done that. I looked at the improvements that Brian Peterson has suggested and hope that many of those can be incorporated. I think that, I think that they will, will make a big difference. I love the nature trails and all the Greenway connections that you're putting in. I think that's going to be an amazingly strong part of this, this new development, so kudos for that. The renderings didn't show many tall trees, and I don't know whether that's because you were trying to make us see the buildings and not the, and not the trees, but, but you've got a fair bit of pavement and building in this development, so any, any places that you can get those big shade trees in, I think would be greatly appreciated. I know there had been talks when we were approving Bridgepoint that we didn't want a big buffer between these two developments, we want them to feel connected, and I, I think that that's still true. My concern is just that with the parking spaces you've got on that entry drive, I don't know if at night, as cars are pulling in there, if the lights are going to shine into the, into the Bridgepoint neighbors. There's no shrubs or anything in front of the parking stalls, so as you proceed with the landscape plan, just, just think about that. So not, again, not a buffer to separate the neighborhoods, but to kind of mitigate the impact of that parking. And I, I am sympathetic with the neighbors with the basketball courts, especially given that great diagram that Dan showed earlier showing how much connectivity there is in the area to, to Homestead Park, so I don't know if it would be possible, if there's room at Homestead for this development to give the money you would pay to install that court to install it over there. But certainly, if they do end up getting built here, it would have to be with limited, you know, set time hours and no lights, I think, for, for that. In terms of the ADA accessibility, I think anywhere you can put in universal design, universal design is good for lots of folks, right? Not just, so I think you should, you should think about doing that, especially in the rental units, the renters are going to come and go, and that will change over time, so it's one thing, you know, I think for the for-sale units, people conceivably may move in and stay for many, many years, so that customizing, I think, makes more sense there, but especially in the rental units. I think we should think about wherever you can incorporating those good universal design principles. And in terms of the garbage collection, I would hope that you would maybe explore with the town picking up garbage. We had a disabled family member who lived in an apartment community, or she lived in a townhome community where she had to use a dumpster, and she often couldn't get her garbage out to the dumpster, it was a, it was a real problem for her. So, so just think about that as you're, as you're looking at this. She used to pay neighborhood kids to come and take her garbage out for her, but it was, it, it could be a real problem for her. So just think about that as you plan that part of it, but otherwise, I'm really excited to see this moving forward. I think the site design and the circulation has gotten much better in terms of kids being able to move around without running through parking lots, and I think that's, that's improved a lot, so thank you.
Ms. Stegman and Mr. Parker?
Um, let's see, yeah, I want to echo the thanks from the council member. Brian shared for all the great work on this, and for it moving forward so well in such a challenging year, and for the collaboration between our housing partners that's really come together nicely. Thank you, done a great job of incorporating Brian's input, and I think it sounds like there's some more to go. He always makes things better, so we love that. And I, I love the incorporation of the Hope Gardens and the improvements there, and, and the collaboration and communication there as well. I just, I'm just super happy with this, I think it's just exciting, and I would love to vote for it tonight, if I could. I can't, so I will say things instead. I was actually, you know, we got a lot of emails about the basketball court, so I actually was pleasantly surprised at how the space there is, it seems like there is a little more space between the, the two than I actually expected. I know that council actually asked for that basketball court and to make it bigger, so it could be a little unfair for us to now ask you to take it out. And, you know, we're, we're a basketball town, and so I'm, I, I, as a parent, and knowing lots and lots of parents who we all had to, you know, open the door and throw our kids out, and say, go play, go find kids, go play, don't come back for a while. A place like a basketball court is a great option for, for, especially for older kids and, and younger ones too. So, you know, I, I definitely want to keep the court if there are things that can be done, you know, I'd ask you to consider if there's some extra plantings or shrubs, or some, some kind of mitigation there to explore, you know, that'd be great. But definitely in favor of keeping the basketball court. And, yeah, I love the variety of housing types, the connectivity, the blockability, I think it's just really hit all of our, all of our key points, and it looks like a fabulous place, so thank you very much.
Mr. Parker?
Well, first I want to thank our staff and our development partners for doing a really great job, and I just want to say what an absolute treat it is to be talking to developers of a project and not have to be asking for affordable units. It's something I'm still not quite used to. I think it's also remarkable to me, I mean, again, I really am very pleased by the project, the way that it's evolved, and I guess, this is going to, I hope it doesn't sound condescending, but if the major point of contention in a major project like this is a basketball court, I think we've really all done a really good job. And so I think I'm really very pleased with this, you know, I hope that we can keep the basketball court as a recreational facility, as Ms. Stegman said, you know, this is a basketball town supposedly, you know, the basketball town, although Lawrence may dispute that. So I, I just want to say thank you, and, you know, keep sort of in the back pocket the ability, perhaps at some future date, if there are real, you know, if down the road there are some issues, the ability to put in some maybe kind of noise-deadening fence, or as Ms. Stegman said, some additional plantings. But I'm just really pleased with the way this has come together, and I thank everybody involved.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you to everyone, yes, yes, yes. I was so thinking we're going to be out of here by 9:30, but that didn't happen, so I'm going to try and be quick. It, it's really, really exciting, thank you all for all you've done. I, I think if we can, if we can make this sound issue, I, I would agree, I don't think it's condescending to say on something like this, if, if the basketball court is our, if it is our biggest area of contention, that that's really exciting. And I also appreciate people coming out from the adjoining neighborhoods and being so supportive, and, and for really welcoming people to live, to live next to them and near them. So I think if, if we can do something about the noise, I, I can understand being, not wanting basketball noise all day and into the evening, so if we can do something about the noise, or potentially have it, I, I don't know, in a, in a different location or a payment and loo to the park, I think that's something to look into. I do want to be respectful of the neighbors who've been really kind and, and welcoming, and I really appreciate that. So I think the basketball court, hopefully, we are trying to figure that out, and it's not that I don't want it there, but if we could just make it less noisy, that sounds like maybe a concession that we could, that we could make, but I'm sure we'll figure out a good way to work that out, since that seems to be our only big issue. I would just encourage, yeah, that we keep working away on our urban design list, and I'm just excited for it to come back, and for us to be able to, to see it take shape.
Mr. Boyancey?
Yeah, I also want to echo thanks to the development team for coming up with a great and responsive plan. You know, there have been some changes made to this since the, you know, even the concept plan stage, and it's, it's been responsive. Quick note about the courts, you know, I really appreciate the, the neighbors, you know, speaking on that and, and talking about their concerns with respect to noise. I am confident that, you know, just as this collaborative has been responsive, you know, during this planning stage, that, you know, we can be responsive if, you know, there are noise troubles, you know. I mean, one, one thing I can think of off the top of my head in terms of sound mitigation is, you know, I've been on courts where you, you've got a, a kind of sound barrier wall, and that, you know, has done the trick, so I'm confident that we can be responsive to that if, if it does end up, you know, come, come to be a problem. But I really appreciate, you know, the support, folks have lent from the public to our development team, thank you.
Ms. Goo and Mr. Win?
Well, yeah, well, I, I just want to echo, and I, or the other council members said about our excitement for this project moving forward, we have been talking about the, the, the housing supplies for, especially for the low income, like below 30%, I think this is the, I think it's exciting that we can add our housing stock to support that community in our, in, in Chapel Hill. So in that regard, that what I just want to repeat, I'm hoping that we can reach out to the manufactured housing community residents, and prioritize them in our outreach efforts, if we can work with other nonprofit organizations, other community organizations, to make sure that they are aware of the, this resources when they become available, I think that is something that we should definitely do. And I also heard from the Transportation and Connectivity Board about the connection to the Hope Garden. They feel like that connectivity can be improved if we really want people to use that facility, and to encourage people from the town to use that facility, we need to improve the connectivity. But I haven't heard the comments tonight from the, from board members from the Hope Garden, or Community Garden boards with their concerns about the connectivity. But it seems like a major concern from the Transportation and Connectivity Board. So if our staff can go back to address that, and maybe talk to members of the Connectivity Board, to make sure that if we have that garden facility over there, we want to make sure that it can be utilized. If we can plan something ahead of time, instead of trying to fix the problem later, I think that should be something that we should consider. So, and third thing is about the basketball court. Well, actually, I live in the community, or, or my own house, I have a, a half basketball court within 101, 100 feet from where I live. And I also live in down, I mean, down from where my street is, is our town's, I think, soccer field. There are the kids, I'm playing like at different time of the, the, the day practicing there. And of course, and I'm very close to Rushkis Elementary School, there are four basketball courts actually lined up over there, and there are people playing at different times, but, and, and, and there are houses that build very close to that, that basketball court as well. But I have never seen that people playing from early morning to the late night, usually it ends sometime between six or seven. But I think, well, I, I don't, I'm just sharing my experiences, I'm, I feel like I'm pretty close to all those sports facilities, but from my own experiences and from my observa, observation, and talking to my neighbors, I actually haven't heard anyone say that, that, that sports facilities significantly bothers them, or bring them like noise interference, that's unbearable. But I think that we should definitely be sensitive and be open to the community concerns, so if there's anything we can do with barrier, with the buffers, I think we should do it now, and we should like always, I think that what, what we, what we have always been doing is, well, especially this is a town's parcel, so if in the future, if that basketball court is in operation, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that we're going to be responsible, or we're going to be responsive to the neighbors if there are issues with noise and concern, noise, lights, or other issues, we, I'm sure that we're committed to fix that, to figure out some ways to fix that. But I think the idea of providing those community facilities to people or kids of different age, I think it's a great idea, it's something that I always try to promote. So I'm kind of, at this, at this time, I'm open-minded to having that basketball court. And from my own experiences, I know that it is something, oh, I mean, from my own experience, I'm not saying that it, it's going to be the same, but I'm just sharing my experience, it seems like it's something that's manageable and actually welcomed by the residents at least in my community, so, and I, I think that we're committed to fix any problems in the future, if that is a concern to the residents.
Mr. Win?
I'll be brief, a million thanks to staff and our development partners for all your hard work on this project, and on the basketball court, I live in Vineyard Square, and so, you know, I walk a lot to Homestead Park, and there's only one basketball court there, so for a hooping town, would love to see some more courts. And the court at Homestead Park is nowhere as near as good as the one at Hargrove. So if y'all could take a key from the Hargrove's court and put in like the nice backboard, that's not a sheet of metal, I think that would help with the noise, and would be a lot nicer to play on, please no double rim. And, yeah, I think there are plenty of ways that we can, you know, reduce the noise from the court, whether that's like a wall, or some kind of fence or something, but, um, yeah, we're a hooping community, so gotta have some courts for that.
All right, thank you, I also want to share my thank yous to everybody. I also say also to our nonprofits for working together and coming in together for a proposal. That takes a lot of coordination and efforts, and I appreciate that, and then our staff working with all that coordination and with our developer team as well, so thank you. I'm excited, we get to have development and a community that we wanted it to be a community, and part of being a community is having recreational places to be together. So I support having the court, which could be turned into hopscotch and pickleball, but the kids can get together. I don't know that I'd be comfortable if I lived there to send my child half, you know, .6 miles over to the park and not knowing where they are. The kids need to be feeling like they're part of a community as well, so I think we can find some ways to mitigate the noise. There will not be lights, is what we were told, so it wouldn't go on at late at night. But let's, let's try to figure out some other ways, we're still having our urban designer giving some input, so after hearing these comments tonight, I think we can take a look at that and see what else can be worked out, so. Appreciate the hard work, it is an interesting parcel. We didn't even talk about the railroad line there, which is only used once or twice a week, but it's an interesting parcel, and appreciate the hard work and thoughtfulness that went into creating, like I said, a sense of community. So, that being said, we will need a motion to, to close the public hearing and still take comments, so we're still willing to take your written comments for up to 24 hours, and schedule the application review for May 19th. It was moved by Ms. Stegman, seconded by Mr. Win. All right, we, any more comments of things that haven't been shared already? All right, did the developer get enough input from us, or the development team, I should say?
We, we did, great comments from everybody, so thank you, we will, we will, we will think about the, those over the next week or two.
Okay, roll call vote then, please, Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Boyancey?
Aye.
Ms. Goo?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Stegman?
Aye.
Mayor says aye as well, thank you very much. That is the last item on our agenda this evening, my goodness, council, you've done good work, and we do not have a council meeting or work session next week, I know the staff is breathing a sigh of relief, but we will be seeing you back on Monday, May 3rd for a traffic modeling information session. Mr. Jones, I didn't know if you had anything else to share with council this evening? Okay, well, we will look for updates, declaring the meeting is now adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, be safe.
Hi, folks.